Call to order, pledge of allegiance, visitors' comments, we will reconvene the public hearing. We have old business, which includes other old business, treasure collector department update, cast, contract renewal, new business, town administrator review, other new business, discussion and/or vote relative to ARPA funding, committee reports, town administrator report, signatures and approvals, selectmen roundtable and adjournment. I will say, we are sticking to an eight o'clock schedule again tonight. I understand, I understand, I understand every... Ryan is gonna moderate again as well. We would like to cut off any comments by seven thirty or seven forty-five. We're always accessible to hear comments. You can contact Nicole, you can email any one of us, you can have phone conversations with any one of us to discuss your concerns. We're always available, it doesn't have to be in this public setting. If you have questions for the great metalrook proponents, you have the opportunity to get them, you still will have the opportunity to get them to Nicole and also to them. So I would like... So it's customary in our selectmen meetings that we start with a pledge of allegiance. So, once the flag arrives, I would ask that you stand in joint. Please? Ma'am, well, if you have a chance to speak up. So can everyone please rise? I present the United States of America, and to the republic, with the stance, one nation, unifying, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we're gonna defer visitors' comments. I would like to reconvene the public hearing, and I will just read the public hearing notice again. At six thirty PM, continuance from public hearing Monday, October three, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty, pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter one twenty-eight A, Section thirteen A. The Town of Hartford Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, October three, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty PM at the Hartford Elementary School, Seventy-sixth Schoolhouse Road, Hartford, Mass. zero one zero three seven, to discuss whether to approve the location of Commonwealth Equestrian and Agricultural Center LLC's proposed horse racing operation at two twenty-eight Berry Road. Anyone wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated above. I will now turn the meeting over to the moderator, who will set out the rules and suggestions for tonight's format.
Thank you Chair, we're on the point. There was someone last night that says in rocket science, folks, we've got a lot of people here, sixty seconds. If you see me pointing at my watch, it means you got ten seconds to wrap it up. If I see that you're not making a point or asking a question, I'm just gonna turn your microphone down, okay? There's too many people that are here that want an opportunity. We're trying to afford that as, you know, as many as possible. So without further ado, who would like to be the first? This lady right here. Please announce your name and where you live, please.
Good evening, my name is Farida, and I'm a resident of this town for close to four years. And for the last twenty years, I've worked as an elementary school teacher in a town that's less than twenty miles from here. And whenever I told anyone where I lived, their answer was, "Where's that?" And I just feel like I come to town, and I'm just sad, I'm a sacred, beautiful little town. And I'm just concerned that our entire country can be lost. And I'd like to ask the selectmen, please delay the vote. These are the boards I heard last night. Gambling, alcohol, traffic, questionable animal ethics, and us dealing with the Massachusetts state politicians. None of that seems to match Hartford, none of it. Please delay the vote, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Who else?
Good evening, folks, again, I returned from last night's wedding, which I recently purchased two properties in this great town. I moved here from a country living, and that's what I got. Horses are part of that country living, horses founded this country. It started right here in this town. And this is property. So, the board for the race has stated numerous times, they have a plan for traffic and parking. They have a plan for less than two weekends of races. All the gambling is mobile and not happening on property. Alcohol can be served at every restaurant in the area. And we have a program where you both can ban or bury and harvest. Nobody has a problem with that. It makes no sense. They've said that not only the community has access to this property for four each, for vets and barriers and equine hunters to learn a craft. The horses are well cared for. I never curd of any race track colling horses because they're a horse. That's farm industry chickens. We don't kill a horse simply because it's warm. These horses are just...
Oh, yes. And Barnes, Murphy, still wrote, I read their application to the state. I read the whole two hundred-plus pages twice. And the part that most concerns me is that there is no mention of the number of days they've said they would run. It mentions that the playing field park had runs a hundred, or they had to cut down from a hundred. What they say about they're going to hear is a more modest number of race dates that increase over years is viable. How much does it creep decrease? What's the maximum number?
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Thank you, Mr. Ross. In the application, it specifically says we're buying next year two days, September ten and September eleven. It only asks just for one year. We were asked that question last night, and the administrator and the select board asked us to put an answer in writing. The first answer reached while the legislature had said aspirate for over twenty days of live racing. They recognized the practical challenges and choose this call, being best to suspend pressure through authority, while way this requirement is necessary and appropriate to ensure the financial ability of the license to develop and operate a race track on the road. As we discussed, we do not anticipate in the next decade sufficient horses or persons to come close to this goal. As such, over the next five years, we will see approval to raise the following number of weekends and days. Twenty twenty-three, one weekend, two days. Twenty twenty-four, one weekend, two days. Twenty twenty-five, one weekend, three days. Twenty twenty-six, two weekends, four days. Twenty twenty-seven, two weekends, four days. Further, we commit to include in the hosting agreement an annual review of the number of days and specific dates of racing prior to filing our annual application in public hearing in Hartford for a race meeting license, including your approval of plans for non-racing operations, parking, marketing, and hiring. I hope that answers your question.
Thanks.
Yes, Mrs. Ross.
If Kevin Piddy doesn't understand, horse racing is dying in the United States. There used to be tens of thousands of people who were... The reason Suffolk Downs closed, and it's in all of the articles, because nobody was going to horse racing anymore. But in their two hundred-page-plus manifesto, they're making comments that they're gonna have agritourism destination. They want to have Kentucky Downs Horse Park, which has thousands and hundreds of thousands of people. They have daily events, they have conventions there. They are talking in their manifesto, they wanna host events like the Rolex, which three hundred and sixty thousand people come to that. They're talking five thousand spectators a day, two thousand cars with satellite parking, thirty to sixty temporary kiosks, sixteen thousand five hundred square foot buildings, backup generators, economic spin-off in the millions, and actually it's more like a billions.
That's what I could ask.
Okay. They wanna build a major hotel, they wanna build an RV park. They're already talking about setting up music camp at every vacant building in this town. Which other people would like to do something with that would be more beneficial to the town?
Mrs. Stuffman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are reasons to support this or not support this. Three-quarters of what you said have nothing to do with us. And to be clear, they're relative to Churchill Downs or someplace else. They're not. We've not proposed a hotel, we've not proposed an RV park, we've not proposed any of the Rolex, whatever it is, I don't even know what that is. It is... A six-to-ten-room country inn is not what was described in that conversation. Okay, all right, hey, folks, one at a time. And one last point, Suffolk Downs didn't close because of that. It didn't have subsidies, a hundred and fifty-three acres in the center of, in Boston. It was sold because it had a higher, better purpose. Okay, anyone else that would like to comment or question? Yes, Mr. LaGrasse?
James LaGarcino, Charlie Hobrow. First of all, this is being proposed under the old APR, or if it's under the new APR, as far as I understand, it would not have a chance of help. The first thing about false equivalency, when you talk about horse racing and the Hartman Town Fair and over-the-walls, totally false equivalency to what we're gonna be looking at. The other thing that I wanna mention is, this is going to change our town. Whether it's gonna change it a little bit, or whether it's gonna change it a lot, you could argue and disagree on. Whether you think it's gonna change this town for the positive, or the negative, you could argue and disagree about that. But it will change this town, and I believe significantly. I came here in nineteen seventy-six at twenty-six years old to raise a family, and I did help change the town, too. My wife and another couple in town started rugby soccer, we had hundreds of kids playing soccer on Saturdays and fall and spring. I've had my forty-six years here, and they've been magnificent years. I want the next forty-six years to be equally magnificent. We will see changes, I have seen changes. But I wanna know what the young people who've moved to this town, and there's some great young people I've met, who've moved to this town, and I wanna know what they see for their future and their families going forward.
Yes, Mrs. Ross.
Not so much to you, but to speak to all those points, there is foretold change. Change is inevitable. And change, in a money way, may not be bad for people coming in to start families. I've been here since I was eight, well, that's sometimes a year. I was born here, I was raised here, my parents grew up here. My grandmother grew up in the old rock farm, she was a kind of a chief, that's all gone now. So most of you new people to town may not know those things. I doubt most of you knew from the twenty-acre law boards when you lived to town, and I was lucky enough to work there. I worked there for many years. And on top of that, I was here when the Walts event was going on. And we used to sit on my parents' back porch and watch beautiful trucks roll into town with these big, nice porch trailers, set up big tents, we'd go there every single day. My mother loved it. We'd watch them roll in. It was great, it was great, it brought life to town. All we're doing is trying to preserve land, and it's literally falling apart. Ticks at our savings. We have a four-inch center in the center of town that's falling apart. And I don't see you donating to restore it. We have a church in the center of town that's falling apart, and I don't see any one of you donating to restore it.
Thank you.
You're concerned about the police department, you're concerned about the fire department. Our police department has been totally dismembered the last couple of years because they can't raise money to build a new police department. And I don't see any one of you donating to do that.
Just, just a comment, because it's been raised by a couple of, a couple of folks. We have looked at some vacant properties. Richard Field's talk the other day about a farm-to-table restaurant. We looked at the church, for example, downtown in the Common, and purchasing it and restoring it and turning it into a restaurant. And we also looked at the building, or the two buildings next to it, one abandoned and one used by the school, as a potential country inn for six to ten people. Not a giant hotel, not an enormous restaurant, or, you know, whatever. We're talking about things that, and when we talk about agrotourism, it's a fancy term to deal with the fact that we're gonna buy beef from Will, and we're gonna go to somebody else to buy vegetables, and we're gonna do farm-to-table, locally-produced things. And just to put in perspective what the previous speaker said, when we were going around talking with producers of agricultural products and meats and whatnot, I asked one of the farmers, if we put a restaurant here, and we purchased our materials almost exclusively from you, would it be a good thing for your farm, an okay thing for your farm, a wow thing for your farm? It would be a wow game changer. So when we say agrotourism and making a difference, we're talking about helping the other farms in the area that you're trying to preserve by giving them a market for their products.
Mrs. Salters. You can take it out if you want to.
Hi, Miranda Salters, I've been here sixty-four years. What I wanna do to start on the positive side, we've listened to all the issues here over and over all last night. I don't hear of one positive except that young girl that was just here. What about our agents? This money that we're getting, do we have an ambulance in this town? No, we depend on Westbrook Field, we depend on Barry. How about us having one here? And this added money that we would achieve, and it's a good cause anyways, because what's wrong with animals? Big deal, it's racing. We did it years ago. Everything comes back, it's a circle. So I want you to realize and think about what good it's gonna do to our town because we don't have an ambulance. Police, they're everywhere but here. It's time we get the donations to get into a building right in this town where it's needed, and same with an ambulance.
Just a quick comment. We've been asked by a bunch of residents, would we give money to this or that or something else? And we did not feel that was our prerogative to weigh into it. So we're looking at what we think is responsible in five hundred thousand dollars. We've put in right in the letter you have in front of you, that's unencumbered, five hundred thousand dollars. We would pay our expenses. That five hundred thousand dollars, we were asked about an ambulance, and the projections and our research was about eighty thousand dollars a year. That's a community decision to make, not our decision to make. But we hope that increasing your budget by eight percent will give you the ability to pay for things or do things that otherwise maybe you can't do.
Mrs. Stuffman.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Alina Mandragala, I'm actually, like Fred, the direct neighbor. The view from my bathroom will be the racetrack, and I am not against it or pro. I don't know you. So I think, like, if your trip said, you know, time changes, and, you know, and together, like, that, you know, the history repeats itself, it's a full circle. I came here in two thousand and one, I was here in two thousand and three, and I did not know about that, the festival. And it would be nice to see, you know, something different in this town. I enjoy the Hartford Fair, but it's small. And, you know, my kids are getting older. Do they wanna stay here? I don't know, they're in college, they're finishing college. So I just wanna have open minds, you know? And the other thing, what I have to ask you, what about housing? Those, no, we don't have any hotels. The closest hotel is Sturbridge, Worcester, Springfield. Where do people, like, somebody mentioned people that have RVs? Is there like a plan for RV, like they can park and, and stay for a weekend? Or they're gonna go somewhere else? All of this is gonna work?
Thank you. So let me ask you a question. Part of the reason we looked at putting in a fed and breakfast country inn is then when someone comes to breed, so we have a stallion, you come into town with two mares to meet the stallion, and you stay for ten days. You need a place to stay. Right now, there's no place to stay. We don't need a huge place.
People just wanna come, and I'd say somewhere's gonna be, or, or, you know, it's not police.
So most of the people who come with their horses have a place for their, for their workers or themselves to stay with the horses. They wanna stay, no, they, they stay, they wanna stay with their horses. You come into town with a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand dollars with the horses, three, four horses, you wanna stay with your horses. So you sleep there with your horses, near your horses, as part of the way you stay there. We'll bring in a food truck or something else, or a canteen that will feed them breakfast and lunch as part of what we do. And then when they're gone, they're gone. Thank you, Nina, thank you, Nina.
Mr. DeBros, Mr. DeBros, please.
Hi, I'm Fred DeBros, I'm Anita's neighbor. I live on Upper Church Street since forty years. I am confused about one thing, and I talked to you about yesterday, and I thought so, but she wasn't here. Let's face it. Upper Church Street, one mile long from my house to the yard, roughly, is AP land. Whether the town has an eighteen-foot easement or not, doesn't matter. The land was, was intended by Goodfield and then Eric, and they respected it. And, and Goodfield sold it into AP land, renounced on the profit, paid for his tractor's fine. This is... The ultimate goal of having AP land was not to develop it. That was the Holy Grail. And we said, we neighbors, and everybody says, "It's a good idea." And when you talk to people who come on Upper Church, they say, "Oh, we love it here because it's pristine. It's exactly how we imagined it was and it should be later on." And here you go, if I have, if I have a trailer and I park it, let's say, on Caldwell's land, I, I have the police, and I say, "Rick, where you gonna find it? Look at North Street, just a trail across you, unbelievable thing." What, I, what loss do we go? Do we consider AP, Holy Grail, and the ultimate handshake with the government? Or do you have a loophole to put a big dig in, or you have to take one thousand foot?
Okay, Mr. DeBros, thank you.
The track is a big dig.
Thank you.
I didn't do that, why can't you?
So the track is a grass track that is not a big dig. So that's it, that's it. Let me address a misconception. We're talking about building a stallion barn and a broodmare barn. We're talking about building two buildings. The track we're talking about is overseeding and cutting a one-mile street... Yes, let me finish. Strip along that area. If you come to the track and you walk down and you pick up the trash and whatever else it is you do with your dogs on the Wednesday before a race meet, and then you go away for the weekend, and you come back on Tuesday and do the same thing, you won't know that something happened while you were gone. Because there is no structures that will be there, there will be no activity other than horses trampling on the grass. We have pledged to hay the field and to continue to hay the field. And the reason we picked September ten and eleven is so that we could race after the second haying, so that we wouldn't interfere with the haying of the field. We are not developing a big dig or hotel or some kind of structure. We're talking about building two barns for agricultural purposes. And let me just say one other thing. APR restriction, whether it is the new APR restriction or the old APR restriction, when you read the state statute and you read about agriculture, horses are front and center in the agricultural production. Breeding horses, training horses, and do you know why there were horse races at agricultural fairs and they're exempt all over the state? Because that's how you sell a thoroughbred. You show it, it gets to demonstrate its skills, and then they have what's called the claiming race. And you claim your horse for whatever the price is. That's the way in which a thoroughbred is trained and sold. The racing statute, by the way, the agricultural statute of the Commonwealth is Chapter one twenty-eight A. The racing statute is Chapter one twenty-eight A. The legislature saw these two activities as intertwined. Agriculture's not just the growing of vegetables and consumption of food. It's other activities as well. Right or wrong, that's within the definition of APR.
Thank you, all right. Anyone else that would like to comment or has any questions? I saw Mr. Cole first, and then this lady right there. Thanks, Bill Cole, all right. Well, real quick, something I asked last night about the way the money works, really. I understand that there's simulcasting license, that you're trying to run together that license to allow the simulcast betting, which you can only do if you have a live racing plan. And that was part of the... So if you need a license now, that's really why I brush and think. And if you get that and you've been simulcast, one question is, are you simulcasting on a platform with control that would make revenue for you and for some for Hartford only on the Hartford races? Or anybody with that platform would bet on anything anyway? This is my question. I know there's a, there's a... Part of the application came out with forty-two different towns or entities showing an interest. This is this month, right, since the new law was passed, extended, passed. So the question is, are you going to, you're down for having a supply for the simulcast, if that makes sense? But there's also this category three, with several entities either automatically applying to the downs or some of the other forty-two that are looking to give that license. Are you, that hasn't been revealed, I've seen it, is your entity, C-E-A-C, applying for that license to allow you to do the mobile betting platform because you have a track in Hartford?
Thank you, thank you, Bill. That's a very good question, and I'll try to answer as clearly as I can a very large subject matter, and it's complicated. The simple answer to your question is, we apply for a live racing license. And as a live racing license, we have the ability automatically to simulcast not only races here, but all across the country. So for example, if you were in Boston and you wanna bet on a race at Nairo or Churchill Downs or someplace else, you would use a betting application. And that betting application would then return a piece of money to us, Commonwealth, and to the community. It also would broadcast any race that occurs here across the country, so that if you're in California and you wanted to bet on Hartford, you could turn around and you could do that. The second part of your question was relative to sports wagering. We would actually be a category two license, and we've applied for it, we're on the website. You probably looked under category three where those forty-two entities were. Above that, you will find our name, and it is a live racing venue. And again, it is all through a mobile application. But the revenue benefits the project without any of the traffic or activity because there's no on-site component to it.
Thank you, Mrs. Stuffman.
My name is Connie Rax, I'm here, I'm pretty much a new citizen, so there goes. I'm not, or it's, I think, deliver more information. Anyways. um, I'm not, or, yes, I think we deliver more information, so, anyways, um, the enormous environment, red lights, and Harvick community as a whole are aligned. According to the EPA, animal waste such as dead horses, manure, urine, and waste pollutants will threaten our health and our environment. At a, at a minimum, these pollutants contribute to algae growth, which can decrease oxygen levels to farm watered welling creatures, and transmit diseases to humans, bacteria, and parasites. I'm nervous, by the way.
Please don't be.
Under the best circumstances, this project includes extensive water waste, including animal and veterinary medical waste, and will consume vast amounts of water, as well as environmental noise pollution and traffic congestion. My question is, how will these environmental issues be resolved?
May I have a kind of a question? I haven't heard this asked in a question. So, the answer is, all of those things are regulated, so the, uh, horse manure that's generated on site will be collected, put in a dumpster that's covered, and will be removed from the site. The amount of horse manure you're talking about on the site is relatively minimal coming out of the breeding operation, because the horses are coming in and going out, and it's a relatively small number of horses at any one time. For the events, that's increased in, in size, but it's for a relatively short period of time, and it's collected, and packaged, and dealt with. Noise pollution is not one that I'm aware of relative to horses and, uh, and the like. The issues of, uh, urine and other pieces, we don't have enough animals to qualify as what's called a CAFO, a concentrated, concentrated animal feed operation. If we did, we would have an area around the barns where we would collect the urine, and we would direct the, the soil of the urine from the rain, and it would go into a pond, and you grow some kind of grass, and the grass naturally consumes, uh, and deals with it. So, there are natural processes for dealing with it, and by the time it gets any distance from the farm, it is like it is everywhere else. The soil itself has a magical way of purifying it. But if we got to the point where we had to deal with that, like a dairy operation or something else, you'd have to have a system for purifying it. At the use of water, there's sufficient water and utilities on the site, and no need to put in any trenches or anything else, and we're looking at that in the lower part of the parcel, so it doesn't touch Upper Church Street at all. There's no need to touch that area at all. Ms. McChrystal.
Shell, Jackson Road. I've only been in town about twenty-four years, so I'm kind of a newbie here, but, uh, in any event, uh, my, uh, degree is in urban and regional planning, and I spent about ten years, uh, locating new, uh, locations for post offices, and any town you go into, nobody's ever happy that you have to take your little post office that can no longer accommodate the increased population and so on and so forth, out of the center of town. Change is very difficult. Um, I, I'm gonna paraphrase another, uh, well, prominent member of town, did not speak with this person about this issue, but, um, with the last project we had, um, books, or, planned, or whatever, uh, he said, "Not this project, not here, it's a pristine place." Um, my question is, I was here last night, very interesting, um, you are going to be installing a couple of barns, just a pavilion, uh, it's going to be temporary in terms of the, the stands, and, uh, the food trucks, and so on and so forth, Upper Church is going to be blocked off, and people aren't carrying down that road, or they are at the during events. Um, I understand it's going to be difficult, but, um, you are going to be contributing five hundred thousand to the town? Have I got everything right?
I don't know.
Okay, I, I just really feel like that's for, really, I think, thank you.
Yes, please. Yes. Come on down.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Casey, and I live in Millroy. Uh, we've had a house here for nine years. I have two small kids, ages six and nine. I think it'd be fun to go and bring them to the food trucks, go visit my best friend who lives on, on, on Upper Church Street. I wanna know where you see this town in ten years, when you're at your full potential. Do you see this place better? Do you see yourself still being involved on a daily basis? Is it gonna be better? That's what I wanna know from you. Because my street has four streetlights, two are shut off, and one is turned on. And I'm concerned about the margins. So, I wanna know where you all see this town, because it can help, it can help all the small businesses and everyone here. I don't care I'm going anywhere, so this is gonna affect me for a long time, and I really hope you consider it.
Thank you. So, Casey, God speaks you with the six and nine year old. I live, uh, in, in a community in, just outside of Boston, and I have been active in my community in, as a volunteer, in almost every capacity for thirty years, and, uh, I'm not going anywhere, and I, this group of people I admire and respect, and they need younger people to get involved, there's no doubt about that, no disrespect to these two folks to my left, but they're, part of their passion is to get more people into breeding and racing and horses and birth, and Richard talks about the birth. It makes a big difference to have something to, to do, and I will tell you this, at least for the purposes of this group of people here, you get some very smart people with some resources that want to be part of what's going on here. Not a huge part, not a dominating part, but a part. If they can take an old church and renovate it, if they can help with the page building and make it functional, and they can take in a couple of old houses and turn it into a country inn, that's a pretty big contribution, in my mind, from somebody outside. They don't want to. I, I didn't mean to cut you off, I didn't mean to cut you off. Casey, I, yes, I just wanna, like, announce to the audience, because they're having a hard time hearing people, she asked if, do you see Harvick being better?
So, I think it's a wonderful question that you asked, and I appreciate it. I mentioned last night, just briefly, that, um, at one point, when, uh, early in my life, I had owned a dairy farm, my daughter was, like, five years old at the time, and it was the best experience of her life, and so I mentioned last night, just sort of briefly, that when she heard about, you know, the potential project here, and what we are doing, she and her husband asked if they could move here and be part of it. So, the answer is, I see us and hope that we would be great neighbors, and that we'd be here forever, and I obviously care about what you're saying, and I believe that our goal is to not change the essence and the magnificence and the magic of this town, but to be part of it. And yes, we would like it to be better for some of the reasons that have been raised, like, you don't have an ambulance, and the whole police issue. Um, I was a trustee for the New York City Police Department for twenty years, and so, you know, law enforcement is part of my life, as well as, you know, agriculture and raising horses, but I think, and this is self-serving, but I believe that if you give us a chance, you'd be very proud of what we would do with, with the property, and we'll always be part of your life, we'd like to be part of your life. Thank you, I really appreciate that question. Thank you. Ms., Ms. Hough. Excuse me?
Lori Hoffman.
Oh, Lori, I'm sorry, right up there. So, and also, please speak into the microphone. If you think this is loud, it's not, because we are broadcasting this, and a lot of people are having difficulty hearing, so, don't be afraid to be really loud, so that everybody can hear you. Thank you.
I'll try to be loud. I'm Stacy Hill, I live on North Road. I think it's dangerous to ask these folks if they think it's gonna make Harvick better, because I think they're working really hard to convince us that this is gonna be great for us, and I'm pretty sure it's gonna be great for you, because I think if you're willing to guarantee five hundred thousand dollars to our town, what you're gonna make is a lot more than that. So, I'm really worried that we're gaining a lot of information that sounds really good, and I really urge you to not go yes tonight, because we don't know yet whether this is really good.
Thank you, Ms. Hough. Ms. Hough, my apologies for not seeing you, I really like Lori, I'm trying.
Lori Hoffman, who's not a speaker at all, but I'm gonna try my best, board of selectmen, I think this is a great thing for the town of Harvick. Need to open your eyes, they wanna give us a half a million dollars a year. We need a police station, we need a fire truck, we need an ambulance, we need more service in town. Our taxpayers can't afford it. So, if these folks are willing to bring us money, I think we need to really deeply think hard about this, take outside of the box before we make our final decision. I welcome you folks to the town of Harvick. I think you will be a wonderful asset to this town. I grew up downstream of the standard bred and thoroughbred, uh, breeding farms in Amherst years ago, they were the most magnificent places. My little sisters went down there to watch bulls being born. One of them is a breeder and a trainer in standard breeds. They do fantastic. So, I welcome you town of Harvick. I just ask that if you could please, when the first bull is born, name it Harvick Crown. We are all heartily proud of our town. We're info to Kentucky Derby, and then go on to Triple Crown. Will we get some of those assets, of those winnings? Can we have a verdict under the biggest info for a Kentucky Derby? Thank you, and I hope this all works.
Just turn over here, please.
No. I tried to keep it out loud. Hi, I'm Connie Lori, I'm from the town, November last year. Uh, a new resident, but I've always loved Harvick. It's an incredible community that's got amazing backbone, it's built by agriculture, true agriculture, and ultimately, unfortunately, your industry has baggage. We're not saying that you have baggage, we're saying that the industry itself has problems, and the optics of the industry itself could change the optics of Harvick. And right, wrong, or indifferent, whether your operations are pristine or not pristine, can you make the commitment to us, town of Harvick, that you will not be striking or whipping horses while racing? In addition to that, can, I, in addition to that, from the, from the perspective of questions that were asked last night, town council, does this permanently cement a racing and betting operation at the site? And lastly, I don't think anybody's fallen behind in saying whether or not this is a good thing or bad. I've spent, maybe twenty-seven, but ultimately, I've spent the past six years with financial analysis. We don't have the data to be able to say that. I'm not saying yes or no, but what I am saying is, we need to conduct a thorough, independent cost benefit analysis as a town. We have a tendency as a town to jump into things, to feed, whether that be a cellar, or whether that be a sewer project, without making things through. Rushing things does not work. We need to make this through, and as a result of that, I ask select board to postpone a vote until a thorough, independent cost benefit analysis is completed.
Thanks, Ms. Lori. Last three, sorry, please, although. So, um, you asked three very meaty questions. Uh, fir- first, first on the issue of, uh, horses, Massachusetts has been on the cutting edge, and you're right, it's an industry that has good actors and bad actors, and the actors in this state have largely been good actors, and they have been leaders to changing the industry as a whole. Anti-doping, anti-slaughtering started at Suffolk Downs with Richard Fields. Um, HISA, the Horse Integrity Sa- uh, uh, Safety Authority, which was established less than a year ago, has new regulations, those new regulations are evolving. We're committed to adhering to the best practices across the industry, whatever those may be. And I, and I say it that way, not because, because we don't know, but what I do know is, let's just take something like a whip. They've gone from whipping horses to using something called a crop, which makes a noise, et cetera, to reducing it to the number of times you can use it, and there are certain instances where it becomes an important part of the security and safety of the rider and the horse, to keep them separated and together. And so, rather than having that complicated discussion, what I can tell you is, this group of owners is committed to having an oversight board, it's considered, it's committed to having and following the strictest of standards relative to their horses. Relative to your second question, which is, the going of the cost level of the designation is the first step on the process, it's not the last and only step in the process. It's like zoning a piece of property, and asking to see whether you can get an occupancy for it before you can zone it. You first start out with the use, and then you look at the design, then you go through the planning process, the planning board, the zoning board, the conservation commission, whatever it is we need to do as part of that. Then we have to go to the selectmen and apply for liquor licenses, and common victual licenses, or the ability to close a street, and then we have to do that again on an annual basis every single year to go through the process. So, this isn't the end of the process, this is the beginning of the process, and I'd ask you to think about this. There were seventeen communities, more than seventeen, but in recent memory, there were seventeen communities that did horse racing. None of them race horses anymore, because there are no horses available to race those horses. And so, will this be here in twenty, thirty, forty years? I don't know. It may not, there may not be the horses or the market for it, but I can tell you, in the foreseeable future, there is, and there is a way to bring this agricultural activity as a way to benefit this community and to benefit us. I hope it's beneficial to us, and I hope it's beneficial to you. We wanna be good neighbors, we don't wanna be in a place that we don't wanna be welcomed. We want to be in a place that you welcome us, and you see us as good neighbors. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, I have a, um, Kim from Lou, and I live on Greenwood Road. I have a couple of questions, um, that, and I'll go on to his questions. Number one, um, what you just said about horses, there aren't any horses, why are thoroughbreds one of the most seen breed in slaughter? How's, I mean, got, set ship to slaughter, why is that?
Get all your questions out in one shot, just to be of that.
All right, so, sorry. Also, um, what are your plans, do you have any plans to deal with the animal rights that we are going to have to deal with, the animal rights, people that are gonna come in to, um, protest and to deal with all of that, that issue that comes along with their behavior? That, I, I'm concerned about the safety of our town, and the people in our town, because things like PETA, they're, um, nuts, and I just, I'm a, I'm a little concerned about that, because I, um, I do believe that that will definitely, have you all thought about this sort of thing?
So, so, thanks, Ms. Lori. So, first question, um, the policy, as we've talked about, this group has had a zero policy for slaughter directly, indirectly, or in any way possible, and people are banned from what goes on. I can't speak to the industry standards or what that is, whether it relates to the lack of availability of an ability to sell, or race, or raise revenue. So that everyone understands, the purse revenue that comes into the state, that then gets redistributed to the top six horses that run in the race, that's how those horses pay, those breeders, horse farms, pay for the operations of their horses. So, you can think of it as, money is collected on a state basis, and then the horse owners, through this process of training and racing, get to, get paid for some of that, which deals with some of the slaughter. Their issue? The...
What, 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 what?
Not in this community, they're not, because there aren't, there aren't the thoroughbreds here to fit into that. The second question you asked was, um... The, the PETA folks are, have, have been active in advocacy issues, I don't know that they've been active at the trotter track at Plainridge, in, in any meaningful way there, I don't recall any seeing it in there, they were not active at Suffolk Downs. They're not a group of people that, uh, for the most part, as far as I can tell, pit at existing operations. They deal with what they see as policy changes and issues. Ms. Wilczynski.
Hi, my name's Carolyn Zinski, I live on Berry Road. I'm actually, looking at your site map, I'm sandwiched, pretty much, by, by, you know, your property, uh, or the property in question. You know, everything that, that you're saying is fantastic, it sounds great, right? It sounds great, right? But you know what? It means nothing to me. And I'll tell you why. I work in technical sales for a tech company. And I've been in a lot of really competitive situations. You know, what I do know about sales, I mean, you're trying to sell this to the town, is that there are always competitive situations where there's someone on the other side trying to sell to my customer and promising them the world. So saying, we'll give you this, we'll add in this service, we'll add in this stuff. And then when it comes time for the deal to close, it closes. And then afterwards, when the money is paid, when everything is done, there really is no incentive. So I'm looking at you as a seller right now. And what really means something to me, I moved here after I graduated college. I established my career in Boston, lived in Boston for a while. What means a lot to me is the representatives that we have up here that represent our town. So I'm going to speak directly to you. I've known you my whole life, my whole life, your whole family, my whole life. I voted for you. I had a sign on my front lawn, not only because I've known you my whole life, but I also believe that you'll make the right decisions for the town. And my personal perception here is that we don't know enough about this. They're coming and promising us the world. And I implore you, please, along with the other select people that I do not know as well, please either say no or delay the vote. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Hahn.
Um, I just want to collaborate with you. I want us to collaborate on what this could be and have a process where we, we share our dreams, if that's possible.
Thank you, and we hope the same.
Yes, Ms. Hayden.
Hi, Meg. Hi, I'm Jerry Hill of Dean Hardwick. And I'm really impressed by all of the work from everybody. I was at last night, and I also was at the original meeting for the planning board and the select. So at this point, I just want to share four observations and then one question. First, it does seem prudent, really, that we check and double-check the legal implications and the potential loss of control for Hardwick under state statutes regarding approving the location for race day, what it means now, what it could mean down the road, with independent council who's really experienced knowing this part of law. Second, seems it's better to proceed with a schedule and a process that meets Hardwick's best interests, both our financial and our community cohesiveness interests. Third, I'm wondering if we have a public meeting, at which point we walk out saying, oh, we got five hundred thousand dollars, without knowing everything. Is it feasible to look at the bigger picture before the first decision is made? And if they think in terms of millions, maybe we should too. Fourth, I think based on attendance and interest and some, many of the comments and so on, if the board does elect, agree to approve the vote, yes, the location, especially if it feels rushed, I'm pretty sure there'll be enough signatures so that then a petition would be filed to go to overturn it, and then we would go to a town vote. And we all know, when you are moving into a voting season, misperceptions and adversity can really come into play. And finally, my question, is the select board willing to delay until we can, as a community, really feel we understand all of the issues and the concerns that people are expressing best?
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
So procedurally, in a public hearing, we're doing exactly what we should be doing in a public hearing. Getting input, getting information. What will happen is the select board will close the public hearing, and the select board will have discussion at that point. So I can't speak for my fellow board members, but that's the process. So after we close the public hearing, then we will talk as a board and come up with our decision, whether we're voting tonight on location or whether we're deferring that to a future meeting.
Mr. Hayden. I'm sorry, Mr. Raymond.
He spoke last night, I didn't get to talk to him. My name is Steve Boyko. I live on Greenwich Road here at Hardwick. I'm rather new to Hardwick as a community. However, my family was displaced from the Quavon reservoir. They didn't have a choice. They were displaced. The unintended consequence of the scar that is Quavon is the beauty of Quavon and also the beauty and majesty of Hardwick. I moved here to Hardwick after looking at fifty-some odd houses with my wife for a spot to raise a man. I have four children, God willing, we will have four anymore. Now, my wife does all, my wife does all of her, and I know that. I moved here unconditionally. Unconditionally, I bought a house. I didn't have a house inspection. I didn't know what I was getting into entirely, but I bought it because I loved it. You spoke to the fact that you love the property. It's easy for me to say, why don't you buy the property and then do all this later? However, I, from, that's, that's to you, and I don't expect you to do that. However, from the select board standpoint, I would encourage you to strongly consider the timeline. And what is that mean here? Because this is a big change. It is a change for the community, as other people have said. And I understand that the biggest thing and the biggest concern that I have is where is parking going to be? Because that will determine the flow of traffic in and out and around town during these festival days. The biggest issue is parking. And I would like to know where the initial intent is for these vehicles for the people that are going to come. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. It's nice to meet a, uh, uh, someone whose family was from Dana into a Prescott area. The parking is a commitment in the host community agreement that we would have an approved parking plan on an annual basis with the select board. It may change from year to year based on what worked and what didn't work. Our current thinking with our engineers is that we would do a combination of satellite parking and lots for people who are workers or people that are here for an extended period of time, and some parking on adjacent parcels closer to the site for more immediate business. That we would have literally, when you saw the number of jobs and we talked about hundreds of jobs associated with this, especially for people who are underemployed or below the poverty line, those jobs are largely dealing with managing the flow of traffic and ushering and helping move people along the process. So we want the traffic to flow well for the community. We want it to flow well for customers and patrons and people who are here. And we're committed to working on a intense annual basis to make sure that there is a plan to do just that. I, I don't know how to answer, we don't have a specific plan today.
Okay, all right, all right. He's, he's, he's stated his reply to the comments. Anyone else? Oh, yes, Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Raymond, that was Mr. Raymond, and then Mr. Jersey.
Dr. Richard. I came first tonight. I ended last night with Peter, dressed tall and a father. That was me, that's normally down to me, that's mine, and that's not taking away, I want to take away from Hardwick. That, that was on me to get more upset. But all right, all right, dude. So I had more to that, kind of play of your whole, your dream and that thing, and I was going to go down. Then this whole time of this racing, notoriously corrupt, big casino, you've kind of been intertwined with that. So now I'm going to call to the select. We need money, we need the town to change things. Do we want a notorious corrupt industry with a man who just admitted that sat on the board of New York City Police Department another notoriously corrupt agency? Is that where we want to go? Is that what we want to do? Is that how we want to get away? And some of the people, it's reality. I can imagine.
One for a second there. So I'm sitting here quietly listening to everybody, I listen to every stable comments. Hardwick is not about someone standing up here voicing their opinion and people catcalling them in the back. There are people sitting in the audience that has reached out to me personally that are afraid to stand up and speak. That is not Hardwick. What is wrong here? Everybody here has a voice. I heard a comment about us limiting the public hearing. This is going to be three hours of public hearing on this. We are available, we live in town, we're available twenty-four seven for a phone call and email. We don't get any emails, we don't get any phone calls. We're sitting here listening to three hours of your concerns, not taken lightly. I ask you to respect the people sitting next to you and don't catcall. Speak, be polite, because people, believe it or not, sitting in this audience have an opinion and are afraid to come up and voice it. That's wrong. That is not Hardwick. And I think you all should appreciate that. And I think you all know that. I have been here for a very long time. I moved here when I was five. So I've been here forty-eight years. Yes, I am fifty-three. And you know what? I work an hour away, forty-five minutes away, by the sign. I'd like to be here. You all like to be here. So you know what? Let's just be nice to each other. Let everybody voice their opinion so they don't have to be afraid to say how they feel. That is not what Hardwick is about.
Yes, I apologize. Still, after, after Mr. Pragul, I apologize.
I had a question last night, and I don't think I got an answer to it. It was about trying to figure out a way to possibly figure out the maximum per race capacity. That, that question really wasn't answered. You know, is it? I'm wondering if there's some way to figure out a methodology to either have an online system where people who wish to attend a race can, not necessarily for monetary value, but get a dance online so that you know how many people are expected on a race day, so that you can have a maximum number that can go into a host town agreement, not to exceed X number of people on a specific race day, including personnel, breeders, trainers, all that stuff, so that there's a maximum number of people coming into town on a specific day. Another thing that comes into mind that is, I think, important because everybody has talked about the pristine nature of that location. The, the changes don't seem that radical, but what concerns me is the setup and the take down. There needs to be some kind of prescribed time period for the, we're going to have a race day. All the setup has to occur within twenty-four hours of the race and removed twenty-four hours afterwards. Nobody wants to be looking at four potties for four weeks sitting. And I think that's important.
Thank you, these comments. Let me just make a couple of comments. We are, we listened to that comment last night, and we've had several conversations around how do we deal with capacity? We're committed to finding a way to deal with that. That's a creative solution. It also relates to the days and dates in which it occurs. It relates to the way it's marketed. But we'll work with the board of selectmen to figure out how we put something in the host community agreement that has teeth, that can figure out what is, how we deal with that question. I don't have a direct answer for you. I think you've offered a creative solution, and I think we have to work together to figure out how we make something like that work. But we hear your concern, and we'll try to deal with that. The takedown and setup, I would say, is the same kind of detail that we can work with the board of selectmen on a host community agreement to deal with that. The takedown is relatively easy because everybody wants their materials and everything back quickly. And the people who have the horses when they're done racing want it to part. But we could figure out a schedule that makes sense. Realistically, we're looking at a day and a half in advance and the day after for the way in which these things will work.
Mr. Jersey. And then Ms. Pragul.
Hi, that's Joe Jurassic. I live in town every single day of my life. So I can say I'm a towner. I have seen Hardwick grow. I've seen Hardwick stay still. It's just not the same Hardwick as fifty years ago, or a hundred, or two hundred, but it's not grown very much at one, one big leap. I think what we need here, and I've seen this happen with the landfill, where we didn't want the compromise. Everything in life and business is a compromise. We have people over there in that wall, we have people over there in that wall. We need to utilize and realize we have something that we can gain upon and something that we need to control. So we can't just give in to the right side of the wall. We can't give in to the left side of the wall. There's a compromise in everything in life. We have to find that compromise. I'm coming in a little late to this game. I've been away. I don't know all the specific facts, but I see some good things that can happen for Hardwick. We need an ambulance. We need an ambulance that can save your lives. All these people are here tomorrow. Any of you can have a problem, and we have a freaking ambulance that isn't going to come for a half hour. You're going to die. You're going to die. People will die, and we have lost that service. And a town provides services. We provide schools. We provide sewage. We provide water. We provide fire. We provide highway. We need to provide things to our citizens. And we're bypassing some of these things that can provide that. And we need to compromise on some of that. Now, we cannot lose control. I'm not sure who is going to regulate this. I'm sorry, but I'm going to keep talking. I'm going to turn my desk. We got, we got to regulate this. We need to, maybe we need to review this here. And that's a, and that's a risky issue here. Who wants to come and spend one night in this affected level of spending their own kind of time and provide a job? But we also need to regulate this. We need to maybe yearly regulate something and say, well, that's going to happen.
Now, Mr. Jurassic, I'm going to talk a lot. Trying to be fair, everybody.
Just a quick response to that. This is the most heavily regulated activity that you will see. And there is, if there is even a whiff of corruption or scandal or problem or something else, the state police unit has a, the sign that investigates these things. There is, all of this folklore of problem or whatever else might make a nice nineteen fifty's movie. It's not the world we live in today. This is a very heavily regulated industry, and we will be before this board of selectmen several times a year, every year. The gaming commission will have a hearing in Hardwick once a year, every year on a license. We will be before the board with plans and proposals every... We will be before the Board with plans and proposals every single year. And what I would tell you is, we're prepared. I introduced Mary last night. We, if you wanna email us or reach out to us, we're happy to talk to small groups or people. This is anonymous. Half of this, if we talked about it, is not even remotely close to truth or reality. You wanna talk to us? Send us something that has a contact information and we'll talk to you. Not something that has no fingerprints whatsoever, electronic or otherwise. Thank you. Mrs. Prowdy and Mr. Remerski is gonna be the last one this evening. And I apologize if I've cut you off or threatened to turn your microphone down. We're trying to make this as equitable a affair for everybody got the opportunity to be heard. As Chairwoman Coink has mentioned, you know, she hasn't got any emails or phone calls. This isn't the only form. There are other opportunities. When I was Selectman, I, it took me an hour to get a loaf of bread because I was stopped everywhere I went. These people wanna be stopped. So if you've got questions, comments and concerns, let it be known. Mrs. Prowdy.
I think I need the ambulance. Um, my name's Robin Prowdy and my husband and our thirty-year-old son Dana and I own the farm, Culver Hill Farms, two miles east of Great Meadow Brook. Uh, so I just have a farm and I have no questions tonight. Um, I think it would be amazing to see a horse farm, a breeding horse farm running around in Great Meadow Brook. Uh, but I think you have crossed the line on some strange place by blurring your intentions of breeding quality thoroughbards and all the negative aspects of gambling. And it's one maybe asking of, so that's just how it feels. I hope it doesn't get in the public.
Um, I wanna acknowledge collaboration. I think when there's extreme opinions that we're expressed, some are, else is the truth. And the emotions are hard to, um, deal if they kind of possess the type of truth. My take on this is that this has been a debate about, about probably less about how someone uses their land because everyone in this town believes in landowner rights. You can do what you want on your land. And I learned about that by talking to other people. And I, um, I'm adopting that as a more clear view for myself. I think what we're debating here is how the common space is gonna be managed. The emotions and what gets people upset is how are the roads going to be used? How, how is it gonna impact my experience, our experience of the common space, what we hear, what we see, what we come in contact with? Because this is quite a big change that will have to be managed. So I'm asking if the Select Board would consider that there should be a third group at the table here, one table here, one table here. There should be a third group with a few people in town that represent, um, some input in this spirit of collaboration. And that a plan that reflects some consideration of how to control this. Uh, a plan that communicates a good exit for the town. If the town decides after one, two, three, four events, it's really not for the town, can they have a clear exit? And that a, um, then a vote takes place when that information is in place. Uh, a vote now tonight might be perceived by many as hasty and the lack of clarity on what the exit is, how to control, make force reactions that aren't in the best interest of the project, that, uh, more information will be better. So that's my take. More collaboration.
Thank you, Stan. All right, at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting back over to the Chairwoman or Selectman Julie Coink. Please remember, this is still a public meeting, so if you are going to leave, please do so quietly. Don't start a conversation. They still have official business. Obviously, they're sure they would welcome you to sit and listen to the rest of it.
I would love it. This is probably, this would be the biggest Selectmen's meeting we've had in a very long time, probably since I've been in office and probably for Kelly and Rob also. Um, thank you for all of your comments. Sorry, I got a little angry, but, um, in, in my responses. But I think that everybody deserves respect, um, including the people sitting up here. Um, regardless of whether they're townies or not townies. That's not who we are as Hardwick. We respect everybody. Um, so I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I will make a motion to close the public hearing. So it was, sorry, it was moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So procedurally, we have closed the public hearing. Now is the portion of the meeting, um, where the Selectmen will discuss how we are going to proceed with a vote, a non-vote, or how we're gonna proceed with our discussions or decisions. Kelly or Rob, do you have any comments about how you wanna proceed?
Um, oh, you want me to speak into the, okay, perfect. No, no, I use a microphone in our meetings. Um, I guess after hearing everyone speak for the last two evenings and knowing that there are some other, um, meetings that have to take place anyway, anyway, that it may behoove us to pause for, you know, we have a meeting in two weeks, possibly two weeks. And be able to gather information, perhaps answer more questions. Uh, if anyone, and, and I will reiterate what Julie said, we're all here. We're all right in town. If you don't have our phone numbers or our emails, approach us after a meeting and ask. We're all more than happy to give them out. Um, so that's my take on it. I'm, I'm happy to pause for a couple of weeks to our next meeting.
Um, I'd have to agree with you. Um, at this point, I think we need to answer the question that's come up several times about the site licensing for the site. I think we can't really make a decision on that. Right. I have a feeling that, that bears a lot of weight, a lot of people, whether they would agree to this or not. And then we have the traffic concern, but I don't see an answer to the traffic concern until they get to the next step of the process. Um, because you guys need to commit to what you're doing. But you need a commitment to Masai Seo so you can commit to what you're, so we're, we're in this circle here. So, um, but let's, we can discuss these matters rather than, I think, get, I want to get some more legal decisions.
I just wanted to, um, I will add though, personally, I think this could really be a good thing for Hardwick. Financially, I think it could be, you know, if done correctly, I think it could be a wonderful, you know, these festivals could be great. I used to enjoy bringing my kids to Over the Walls when they were small. It was, it was a place to go and everyone got together, just, you know, a bigger, yes, bigger than the Hardwick fair. But again, if done correctly, I think it could be a great meeting grounds for people to. So as part of the process, uh, the Gaming Commission, um, comes out and does a public session. So, um, we are working on scheduling that. Um, it is public. You are able to come and voice your opinions and concerns. And I hope we do it with respect. I, I know you guys all will. Um, and, um, so I am also in favor of delaying the vote. Um, I can honestly tell you that from the beginning of this, that's sort of where my mind has been. Um, you know, for any of you who have attended Selectmen's meetings, um, and I would love to see more of you there. Even if you're on Zoom, however you're there, come on, we wanna hear what you have to say. Uh, we're, we've been embroiled in the sewer discussion for a very long time. You have three tired people sitting up here. Four. Four. Um, and, um, I don't think the intent is to rush into anything. I think the intent is, um, we all live here. We want this to be something good for the town. I do also think this could be good for the town. Uh, I'm a finance person, so I understand full well what this money means to the town. I am full well and capable of doing a cost benefit analysis. Um, but agree that there's so many polarized comments in the room that, um, we have to take pause. And also, I will say that the great Meadow Brook proponents are not putting pressure on this board to make a decision tonight. You need to know that. Um, I've not felt pressure. I'm sure Kelly and Rob or Nicole haven't felt pressure to make a decision. Uh, I, I would imagine they want this to be the right decision. Can you imagine coming into a town like Hardwick and we're all pretty vocal? I mean, you heard a lot of us tonight, knowing that people don't like you. People don't want you there. People don't want what you have. That's the most uncomfortable feeling ever. So I think they would want us to do our due diligence. And Stan, I think you said it great. There is a middle position somewhere. There is always a middle position. Someone once told me that the best strategy is in negotiation, both sides feel a little pain when it's done. That's a successful negotiation. So whether you believe that or not, I think collaboration is probably the best way for us to move forward on that. And whether it's collaborating with information, collaborating with ideas, um, you heard them say there were some new ideas that were brought up for them tonight. I think that's a great way. And again, I know you might feel gypped or, or that this time wasn't long enough. This has been three hours of a public forum. So, you know, and we're all here. So within the next two weeks, call, email, get to Nicole. If there's questions that are unanswered, she will send them off to the great Meadow Brook proponents to get the answers. So I likewise am of the mind that we are deferring. Um, I don't think we need a, don't need a vote on that, Ryan, procedurally. No. So we're of the mind. We heard what you had to say. We're deferring. However, thank you. Thank you. Everything we discuss, we try to be very transparent on our agendas. So you might look at our agendas and say, well, they even have the pledge of allegiance on it. Um, we try to be very specific so that people, uh, who want to attend know what's on. So when this is going to be discussed again, it will be on our Selectmen's agendas. And we'll try to make sure that it's out on Facebook or whatever media we have to let you know the topic is coming up again. Thank you, everybody. We are gonna continue on with our meeting. You're welcome to stay and listen. Uh, you're also welcome to leave. And the moderators asked that you be quietly if you, if you can, please. So, um, we are gonna maybe for people who are sitting in the audience. So, um, we are gonna move over visitors' comments on their old business. Other old business, I don't think we have any to discuss tonight. We have the treasure collector department update, which is, uh, you should take under advisement for a future meeting. So, so we're still conducting our meeting here. So we're still conducting our meeting and know you all have a lot to talk about, but there are people sitting in the audience that want to hear the meeting perhaps. So if you could do so quietly or wait to have the conversation till you leave the room, that's appreciated. Uh, so we will defer the Comcast contract renewal to our next meeting. Did I just, um, did you get my comment about the buildings were not correct on that redlined version?
Yeah.
Okay, that was my, I went through it.
I'm waiting in your bathroom. It's only two weeks.
Okay. The next item, um, is under new business town administrator review. We are going to defer that until Nicole returns. Um, sorry, I went out of order. Uh, no, I didn't.
You're fine.
I can't keep jumping up and down here. Other new business, there's no other new business. Uh, discussion intervo, relative to the art book funding, uh, there are no, my new items. Committee reports, they were mailed to you and they're in your packet so we can reveal them on leisure. Town administrator report.
Unfortunately, I submitted my draft report to you. And, uh, so it's not, it's not the completed report. All my new business is sitting at my desk. Um, the new applicants, the prospective applicants at two twenty-eight Berry Road are on here. Uh, we're going to be sending out annual renewals at the end of this week. We will be, whoa, we'll be, um, also working on the sewer bills. Those will be going out. Those are due in separate day. So last year we sent them out early November, November eighth, actually. So we will, we'll be getting those out. Uh, and, oh, other than, so the ongoing, and everything here is something that you've already seen. When it's completed and resolved is when it comes out, right? I think that's the best way to do it. And the, uh, recycling container contract has been resolved. So they will be coming and taking them away this week and we've dissolved the contract, so we're all set there. Um, so, so that's all I have for that. And then you just have your So under signatures and approvals, um, we were in receipt of a, um, a, a letter from KP Law dated September twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, we did meet on that same day and some of our board did not have the opportunity to review the letter in, um, full format. And so at that time, we asked for, um, the deferral of acknowledgement of receipt of the letter to tonight. Have you both had a chance to review the letter and were willing to proceed with acknowledging? So, um, I will entertain a motion to approve, or sorry, acknowledge receipt of the letter from KP Law, uh, addressed to, um, myself as chair and members of the Board of Selectmen, um, dated September twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, relative to the use of town-owned land for site of sewer pump station submitted by Greg Corbell. I would make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the letter dated September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two from KP Law regarding use of town-owned land for the site of the sewer pump station, um, submitted by Greg Corbell.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, a call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Last item on the agenda, do you have anything, anybody else? Last item on the agenda is adjournment. So there's been a motion to adjourn and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourning at seven fifty-nine. Thank you.